And wear masks. I was surprised, a lot of people are wearing masks even outside here. I mean, not that they live in mine, but I mean, it's more than I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor, we have it started and we're ready to go. We were waiting on Mandelbaum, and he's here. Mayor? Are you on?
I do not see Frank.
He's, he's on here.
Oh, yeah, there he is.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering why he's not hearing me.
We're on, we're finding the print copy of the proclamation. Give us just a second.
Okay, did you want us to blow that up?
Might have to, but if we can get Monica's version here in print, we'll, we'll use it.
Not probably that big, Laura, at all.
No, that's okay. I'll read it up there.
I could be able to get it off of her drive.
I got it. Don't worry.
Okay, we're live.
Yeah. All right, you guys. Good afternoon, everybody. Prior to the start of our city council meeting tonight, we've got a really important proclamation. It's National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. This is the longest night of the year. And generally, every December 21st, there's a memorial up at the Capitol. We recognize those who have passed that have suffered homeless and have been in a struggling situation. And their lives are remembered, and those who knew them, respect them, and want to make sure that their, their lives and their presence was remembered. And this year, more than, than a lot of others, here we are, in the middle of a pandemic, and people suffering more than they have in almost a generation. And it's, it's up to us to do everything that we can to help those that are most in need, and especially during this holiday season. So let me quickly go through the proclamation. It reads as follows. The winter poses extreme hardship for unsheltered and inadequately housed low-income adults and children in Des Moines. The spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding our commitment to end homelessness. And whereas December 21st has been designated the National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council. And whereas JAPA organizes the Iowa Homeless Memorial each year to remember those who have died homeless, to honor them as human beings and fellow residents, and to prevent future homeless deaths by recommitting ourselves to provide fundamental solutions to homelessness. And whereas, in this season of generosity and sharing, residents of Des Moines are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas remembering those who have died on the streets, the cause of ending homelessness is kept urgent, as is the city's commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now, therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of the city council and all of our residents of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim December 21st, 2020, is National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. In recognition of the people who have died homeless in and around Des Moines, we hereby ask all residents to take a moment of silence in remembrance and encourage our residents to support all local efforts to eliminate homelessness in our community. And let's take a moment right now. Thank you all for your efforts. We'll start our city council meeting in just a few minutes.
Okay, it's awfully silent. Are we starting?
Silent because nobody's saying anything.
Must be it. It's 4:31.
Hi, everybody.
I'm there.
I'm there.
Okay, are all the lines opened up? Everybody can get on? Okay.
Just a moment, I had to unmute. Yes, everybody's 40, 41 attendees and all the panelists are here.
Okay, let's welcome everybody to our last meeting of 2020 for December 21st. We had our homeless memorial proclamation that we read a few minutes ago, minutes ago, honoring those who are homeless and on our streets, and urging all of us to work to end homelessness and support those that really needed, especially during this time of pandemic and a bit of a recession, and it's driving more people into tough, tough situations. So, let's call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take a roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. I will say that there is, I don't see any changes. So I think we're okay. Unless there's any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 44. These are generally routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless someone, council, or public requests an item be removed to be considered separately. There is a request this evening for item 6C by council members Mandelbaum and Boss to speak on this item. Council, any other items?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved. I'll ask now if there's anybody in the public who would like to pull an item, three through 44. So, Joe?
Yes, sir. Oh.
Yes, could I please request number 31, move to discussion, please?
Okay, we have a request for item 31. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no others. Let's, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 6C by council members Mandelbaum and Boss. Is there anyone more to leave?
And now?
Want to, to move the removal of item 31 as requested? Anybody want to move that one? All right, hearing none. We have a motion with the request on 6C. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, I'm sorry, we need to, Kay, let's have a roll call on that one.
Yes, County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, before we move to item 6C, I would suggest that the member of the public who wanted 31, please send us your concerns and questions to the city manager and the city clerk, and we'll try to get an answer back to you to respond. Let's go ahead. Item 6C, who wants to open up? Councilmember Mandelbaum or Boss?
Sure, I, I'm, I'm happy to, to start.
Okay, so the general public knows, six is ordering the construction of the following C is Ingersoll Avenue, 42nd Street to Pope Boulevard. It's a reconstruction, receiving bids of January 20th of 2021. And we're going to set a date of hearing following that, February 22nd of 21. And the engineer's estimate for this project is $3,620,000. And it's council communication number 20-546. Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, so this is an infrastructure improvement along Ingersoll. And there were, there was a public meeting that, that was held with the, the neighbors to talk about this project. One of the things that was raised during that public meeting was a concern about the speed. And, and there was support from the neighbors who were at the public meeting to reduce the, the speed limit on this section of Ingersoll, the 25 miles per hour. That recommendation is consistent with the recommendations in Move DSM. It's also consistent with what the Transportation Safety Committee recommended for this, for this stretch. And so I'd like to, to see when, when this construction is completed, I'd like to see this stretch. And I think the Transportation Safety Committee looked a little bit farther, because the next stretch of Ingersoll, it's already narrowed to, to just a, a two-lane stretch. And they recommended that stretch from Pope Boulevard that curves around at 59th all the way to Grand be 25 miles per hour as well. And I'd like to see us move forward with, with those changes when this construction project is completed. And so that, that was the purpose of my polling it. I'd like to move this item with the addition that we asked staff to come back with us with that 25 mile per hour speed limit change.
All right, is councilmember Boss, do you have any input you'd like to add to this?
I am, thank you, Mayor County. Yes, I concur with Josh's statements about 25 miles an hour on a residential street. And further that we, we take this street all the way down to where Grand and, and Ingersoll intersect at 59th Street. You know, this is what we have outlined in Move DSM. I just would like to show for the record that there are other Midwest cities that are, are moving to 20 miles an hour in residential areas. And it's all about safety and reducing the number of accidents and the seriousness of accidents, especially with the vulnerable users, which would be bicyclists and pedestrians. So with that, we'd like to move this direction by the city manager's office to reduce it to 25 miles an hour.
All right, anybody else have any thoughts or comments on this? Scott, I've got a couple of questions, living in this neighborhood. I'd like to get some sort of a sense, if, if we have it, maybe Steve Neighbors on or something can give us some sort of a sense as to the accidents or something that's occurring between Pope and 42nd, and what kind of speeding we're seeing. And maybe even talk to us a little bit about what the difference is going to be between the fear of that today and going from a 60-foot street down to a 22-foot street, and how that may affect speeds as it is. I haven't witnessed a lot of speeding along there, but I'd love to have some input from our, our engineer, just to kind of update us.
Yes, yes, Mayor, I think we do have Steve. Kay, if you're able to find Steve on there to unmute him. Steve, if you could, just start us out with the, the change in the roadway, and what, what the studies showed on the average speeds.
Okay. Yep, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, this is Steve Neighbors, city engineer. So regarding the improvements, what's being proposed, Ingersoll Avenue from Pope Boulevard to 42nd Street, currently, the street is 61 feet curb to curb. Basically, it's 61 feet curb to curb, straight asphalt street. It currently has a three, it's a three-lane roadway with just standard five-foot bike lanes and parking on both sides. So, and then also, it only has four-foot sidewalks on both sides. There is a, a large sidewalk gap in the corridor. And there's only a two-and-a-half foot wide, a two-and-a-half foot wide parkway between the sidewalk and the back of the curb. So what we're proposing is to reduce the 61-foot wide pavement down to a total feet distance of 50 feet. However, the travel lanes, it'll be, it'll go from two, a three-lane road section down to a 22-foot wide asphalt pavement with two, you know, one travel lane in each direction. Then the bike lanes will be modified to be a buffered bike lanes. So they have a three-foot striped buffer, and then a six-foot bike lane. The bike lanes will be concrete, so it's a different pavement material than the roadway. And then the parking will be made of a pervious concrete, or I'm sorry, pervious paver material. So, so one big improvement, we feel, is, is the corridor will be, the roadway pavement will be narrowed. So instead of being this wide asphalt pavement, it is going to feel tighter for motorists using the, driving up and down this court stretch. And also, obviously, the improvements of having a buffered bicycle facility, and then in turn, replacing the sidewalks with wider sidewalks, maybe at least five feet, and then have a seven-foot buffer is a, is a drastic improvement as well. So I, I think that, that's a, a big improvement in the city of the tightness of the corridor. In terms of the crash history, in the past five years, there really is no significant crash history at all. In fact, there's almost virtually, I think there's five minor crashes in five years, which is very, very, very low. There is not really a, a, a crash history, you know, along the corridor. And if I recall correctly, and I apologize, I didn't have the, the 85th percentile speed, I think, was correctly, and I apologize, I didn't have, the, the 85th percentile speed, I think, was around 32 miles an hour, if I remember correctly, but I'd have to check on that, but, so there's, again, no, no real crash history. But again, I think the improvement is going to be drastic overall for all users, with kind of tightening up the corridor, not being such a wide street, as well as the buffered bike lanes and the continuous sidewalks filling in the gaps, make them wider as well, so. But our, but our, in terms of the speeds, city staff ran three, three different speed models. We ran our current model for establishing speed limits, which is basically just using the 85th percentile speed, and then making some adjustments based on number of driveways and whatnot. Also using a different model, the US Limits 2, and also the credible urban speed model, and both these, those methods evaluate free full speeds as well as crash experience, three characteristics, context, users, and all three models show that they recommend a 30 mile an hour speed limit by all three different methods. And I apologize, just to clarify, I, I, it got cut out, what was the, I heard that the west limit was down to where Grand, Ingersoll meets at 59th. What, what was the east limit of the recommended, or the council suggested sign change?
I think councilmember Boss said 59th, is it moves over to connect to Grand?
At, well, I, I had moved it, and it was 42nd Street, this is on the, on the east, and, and the west was that 59th and Grand.
Okay, so it's from.
Around the curve there.
Okay, thank you, so it's from 42nd to the curve, around the curve, okay, thank you. So yeah, the 80, the 85th percentile was 32 miles an hour, and the average, the average speed on the corridor is, that's traveled in this section is 28, so. So again, nothing that jumps out as a, I guess is a, what we would say would be an issue that would flag us.
The mayor, if I could, I understand the motion to bring back after the completion of the project, the proper process of changing the speed limit down to 25, and having the advantage at that point of being able to do some quick analysis on what the speed is after the conclusion of the project, so that way we know what the speed reduction is.
No, that was not the motion. The motion was, so, so that the speed limit is changed when the, the new street construction is in place, when it opens back up, we've got the 25 mile per hour in place.
That's why I asked, thank, thank you for my question.
Yep, thank you for, thank you for asking.
Right, and that's similar to what has happened that we just recently did for Franklin Avenue. So I, I believe, I don't have the Move DSM plan in front of me, but in a residential area, if you are higher than 25 miles an hour, so that would be 30, then you need to have a protected bike lane, unless you have a plan to move to either buffered bike lanes or to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. So that's what our plan, that's, that is how our plan reads, and so 25 mile an hour with buffered bike lanes agrees with Move DSM.
Okay, council, anybody has any additional comments? Regarding this project, this comes as a bit of a surprise to me. Okay, seeing none. Kay, I think we've, we've got a motion, is that correct?
Correct.
Mayor, just a point of clarification, we're setting the date of hearing, but, so with setting the date of hearing, are we, are we directing staff to make the speed limit 25 miles an hour, is that what we're doing?
Well, apparently that's, it, Josh, is that the motion?
Yes, it, it doesn't need to, we don't need to have it 25 miles per hour at the date of hearing, just by, as this project moves through, you know, this will go to bed, and this, this will be constructed thi- this year, that before, before this is opened back up after construction, that staff bring it back in that timeframe.
It will take that amount of time, a little bit of time to, to get that changed, so.
Well, and I think we're going to have to have an ordinance amendment, I'll ask the city attorney, are we going to have to come back on this, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the motion is to bring back an ordinance that would go into place at the completion of the project, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Okay, that's what I wondered, I just need a point of clarification.
All right, thanks, Joe. I'll just say that I have concern about this at this point, after the input from the city engineering, and being part of this neighborhood, I don't know that we've had a full discussion with the neighborhood about it, but, so I'm going to be voting against the motion, but let's go ahead, Kay, and poll the council, please.
County?
No.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
No.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
So we're going to see this again, correct? We're going to, we're going to have an ordinance change that will be voting on for the speed limit, is that correct, Mr. Mayor or Mr. Attorney?
I believe so.
Yes, then I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Your Honor, that's five in favor, motion carries.
All right. Let's move on, that completes the, the consent agenda, and again, this evening, those are items 3 through 44. Item 45, just so everybody knows, that for persons wishing to speak this evening under the public speaking items of the agenda, we will be calling on those who have registered to speak. Because of the number of speakers this evening, I think everybody's going to get 78 seconds to make their comments, and so please keep your own time on it, because as soon as I read it and call your name, we would ask for you to begin, and, and at the end of those 78 seconds, the clerk will announce time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we will move immediately to the next item. At any rate, as a reminder for those items where public comment is not taken or to convey information generally to the council or the city manager, Des Moines residents are encouraged to submit letters or emails, texts or phone calls with additional comments or information to ensure that they're sharing their thoughts and information that they'd like to be shared. So let's start with item 45, it's an ordinance first consideration, which is amending chapter 30, article 8, of sections 30 dash 331, 30 dash 333, 30 dash 338, 30 dash 339, and adding section 30 dash 332B relating to secondhand goods. A is a final consideration of this ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by our city manager and requires six votes. Council, any questions of the?
Sir Mayor, I'll move 45 and 45A.
Okay, 45 and 45A, we don't need any more. All right, I would ask, any further discussion, council? All right, would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item 46 is amending section 74 dash 188 relating to special lighting on facilities. Council communication number 20 dash 559, A under that is a final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by our parts and recreation director, Paige, and again, it requires six votes. Any comment, council, on amending this section relating to the special lighting on our facilities?
Mayor, I'd like to move it if we get to that point.
Okay, the item's been moved, any comment, council, further? Hearing none, would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Item 47 is amending chapter 42 dash 358 relating to notices for nuisances, council communication number 20 dash 553. Any comment or a motion?
I'll move item 47, Your Honor.
All right, item 47's been moved, I don't see that council has any questions or comments on it, would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Let's move to item 48, again, we're going to begin public speaking, and I will, hopefully you are ready to go. Our first speaker this evening is Negus Rudisson Imhop, and Negus, if you're on? Could you put your hand up, maybe? I don't see him, let's move on to the next one. Vanessa? Is Vanessa on? There she is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Vanessa, go ahead.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, I guess you've been hearing from me for several weeks now at these meetings, you pretty much know where I stand. My agenda item says I'm going to speak to you about your behavior, the behavior of the council, and Kay, and Scott toward the public. I guess not so much Scott in these meetings, but the council and Kay are just extremely biased towards the public. If we're not talking about something you agree with, you just simply don't want to hear it, and you'll mute us. I never really listened to these meetings prior to the instance of George Floyd, and then our local black liberation movement inspired me to start getting involved locally, and like a lot of feedback from the conservatives, they say we were doing it the wrong way, rioting and looting, as they say, is the wrong way. So we're getting involved in our local government, but y'all don't want to hear it. And so I guess today I just feel really defeated, I didn't come with anything prepared to say, I, I just wish you guys would open your hearts and listen to what we have to say. You have people here that are passionate about our city and that want to change it, and it's really frustrating.
Time.
Molly, aren't? Molly, I see you? Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Yeah, hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Um, hi, so my name is Molly, I use they, them, her, she, her pronouns, and I live in Ward 1. And I'm speaking today in support of the resolution to get 100% of Des Moines electricity from carbon-free sources by the year 2030. As an island, I have lived through a severe flood, an F2 tornado, and a devastating derecho in my life, and I've seen the destruction and the trauma that these climate disasters have brought upon our communities. Climate change is one of the biggest threats that we're facing, and by taking action to commit to the carbon-free-by-2030 plan, the council would be taking an important step to make our city and our world a safer place for everyone. Please listen to what the people are saying, and stop partnering with corporations like Mid-American, who care more about profits than the safety of our neighbors here in Des Moines. This resolution wouldn't just be an effective tool to mitigate the effects of climate change, it's an opportunity to create good-paying jobs and have affordable utilities for residents of Des Moines. This is an important step, and I hope that the council will side with the people and listen to us and our commitment to combating climate change here in Des Moines and everywhere. Thank you.
All right. It's 5 o'clock, we need to move to hearings, so those of you who are still would like to speak, please remain on, we'll come back after the completion of the hearings. You know, for the hearings this evening, we have several zoning items consisting of numbers 52, number 55, A, B, and C. We also have two vacation hearings and other hearing items. We understand that in previous meetings, there's been some confusion about when the public may raise their hands on a Zoom call, so we're going to remind the public of the rules as we get started on, on our hearings. For the zoning items only, which again are items 52, 55, A, B, and C, we will hear from the parties in interest first, and then the general public. The parties in interest include only the applicant for the rezoning of those living within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned, to whom the city will set notices. After all of that, the parties in interest have made their comment, we will open it up to any member of the public for germane comments. To aid the city clerk in calling on the parties in interest, I will ask everyone else to not raise their hand on the Zoom call unless they are the zoning applicant or live within that 250 feet and have received a mailed notice of the rezoning. Anyone who raises their hand before it is their time will be compared to that mailing list, and if not on the list, will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting. So please wait until I call the general public for the zoning items, or you will not be called on for the remainder of the meeting. And for those members of the general public who wait to raise their hands, they will be called on for up to seven minutes of total germane public comment, at one minute per person, after the parties in interest have spoken, again, for item 52, and for up to five minutes each of total germane public comment, at one minute per person after the parties in interest have spoken on item 55, A, B, and C. For the other hearings that are not zoning hearings, the public may raise your hand immediately upon me reading the item, and for comments that are germane to the item. For the vacation hearings tonight, that's hearing items 50 and 51, each is designed to allow the public to comment concerning the discontinuance of the city use of city property and the conveyance of property interest. As the city is the property owner, the city's representative will have an opportunity to speak for up to five minutes concerning the topic, and the public will be called on for up to five minutes for germane public comment at the not to exceed one minute per person. For item 54, the hearing on the 27th Amendment to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Plan, which is being had only to amend an already existing plan, the public will be called on for up to 10 minutes of germane public comments, yet not to exceed one minute per person. For the remainder of the hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments at not to exceed one minute per person, to a maximum of five minutes per hearing. As a reminder, on the construction hearings, only comments as to the plans. As a reminder, on the construction hearings, only comments as to the plans, specifications, form of the documents, and the engineer's estimate and the low bidder designation will be considered germane on that item. And for the lease hearing, only comments related to the lease of this particular property will be considered germane. I want to remind all members of the public that this is a general council business meeting, and the Council will conduct its meetings efficiently and in an orderly manner. To clarify our rules, citizens' comments must be germane to the subject that we're considering and will rule, and I will rule on that germaneness. Arguing about any ruling referring to other comments or to other speakers engaging in repetitive or slanderous comments or continuing to be non-germane, even on the same item, will be considered disruptive, and such person will not be called on for the remainder of the meeting. This includes those persons who have signed up to speak. So if you disrupt the meeting or adversely affect the orderliness or efficiency of the meeting, you will not be recognized in the public speaking portion of the agenda, and we will instead move to the next non-disqualified speaker. So at any rate, we again wanted to make that clear so that there is no misunderstanding. Our first item this evening is item fifty, which is on the approval of documents to correct the vacation of a portion of Court Avenue Right-Away located south of and adjoining three oh nine Court Avenue to allow for a sidewalk café lease. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. I'll, let's open it up, and we'll ask the Council if they have any comments on that. Again, to the public, germane comments. For the general public, one minute to speak. So, Council, anybody?
I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to move item fifty and fifty-A. And then I'd move to waive the second and third reading after we've had a chance to hear from the public.
Okay, thank you. Council, anybody else? All right. Let's open it up, and again, germane comments from the general public, one minute, five minutes maximum. Does anybody want to speak on this item? Adam? Adam Kellerman?
Hello, my name's Adam Kellerman. I use he, them, her pronouns. I've just noticed in the agendas the past few meetings, there's been a lot of these sidewalk café leases. And I was just wondering if that's like a new thing the city is trying to do, or if it's like an existing thing? Because I just, I hadn't heard of like sidewalk café leases before. See, I was just wondering what that was about. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Adam. We've had them for years, and it's just, you know, usually these just slide through pretty quickly upon recommendation. So thank you for the question. Vanessa, I see your hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that you were reading the rules off to us about being germane and things like that, and you had a really rude tone towards us. I just wanted you to know that the germaneness is based on your opinion and your biases when you cut us off.
I don't find this germane till item fifty.
I know you don't. You don't find anything germane. Bye.
All right. Anybody else? All right, seeing none. We have a motion. Councilmember Mandelbaum moved item fifty and fifty-A, and if there is no dissension, to put a wave of the second and third reading on there as well. Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss? Boss?
Carl?
I'll go on and come back.
All right, yeah, 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 sorry. I'm on a different machine tonight. Excuse me. Thank you.
Okay. Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item fifty-one, the approval of documents to correct the vacation of a portion of Des Moines Street Right-Away located south of and adjoining five nineteen Des Moines Street to allow for a sidewalk café lease. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Council, any comment on this one? Again, five nineteen Des Moines Street?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move fifty-one, fifty-one A and waive the second and third reading after public comment.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to speak on an item somewhat similar to the previous one regarding a vacation of the sidewalk for a sidewalk café lease? All right. Seeing none, let's go ahead and pull the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, item fifty-two is a zoning item, and it's on a request from thirty-seven fifty LLC, Kate Miller's the officer, for the approval of a PUD final development plan, thirty-seven fifty on Grand on property located at thirty-seven fifty Grand Avenue to allow for the redevelopment of the existing vacant First Church of Christ Science with demolition of a portion and addition of an eight-story, forty-two-unit residential condominium tower with two levels being for indoor parking. The building would have first-floor permitted uses of business or professional offices, studio or instructional service, assembly, indoor library, or cultural exhibit. Let's go ahead, and, Council, any comment on this one?
I don't have any comment, but I'm happy to move item fifty-two after we hear from the public.
All right, first, ask if there's any parties in the interest. Again, that's the applicant or those within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the property to speak, and second, any germane comments from the general public, one minute per person up to seven minutes maximum. But is there any party in interest who would like to speak? We'd ask you to put up your hand at this time, or the general public that is within two-hundred-and-fifty and received a notice. All right, seeing none, let's ask now if there's anyone from the general public who would like to speak. I would ask you to put your hands up now for germane comments on this thirty-seven fifty property. Seeing none, let's pull the council, please.
County? County?
County, yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item fifty-three wasn't used this evening. So move on to fifty-four, which is on the proposed Twenty-seventh Amendment to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Plan. Council Communication number twenty-five fifty-six. A is on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed forty-seven million-dollar general obligation urban renewal capital loan notes, twenty-twenty-one B, and again, we will have a hearing on January eleventh of twenty-one. Germane comments from the general public, but we'll ask first, Council, any comment?
No, I'll move fifty-four, fifty-four A.
All right, fifty-four and fifty-four A have been moved. Let's now open it up to the general public. Anybody want to make comment on this? Seeing none, I'll ask you to pull the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Same.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's six yes. Motion carries.
Takes us to item fifty-five. Okay, Council, item A, B, and C are separate hearings, and we're going to consider each one of those separately. So I'm going to read item fifty-five and then fifty-five A, and then B, and then C, and we'll consider those, and I believe with C, we can then add D on to that vote. So fifty-five's items regarding the Market District in the vicinity of southeast Fourth Street and East Market Street, generally from the Des Moines River on the west to southeast Fifth Street on the east, and from east Vine Street on the north to Martin Luther King Junior Parkway on the south. Again, Council Communication number twenty-five sixty-eight. So item on that A, which we will take separately, is on the addition of the Market District Large-Scale Development Plan as an amendment to the Market District of the East Village Master Plan Element, Plan DSM, creating our Tomorrow Plan, and this item was continued from our December seventh, twenty-twenty meeting. Let's go ahead, Council, any comment on this one?
Mayor, I'll jump in real quick. You know, this has been a project that we've all spent a lot of time on and we worked on, and it's nice to see we're getting closer to the finish line. Hats off to the staff. I know they've worked, Aaron's department has worked very, very hard getting this done with our developing team. This is exciting. I mean, our current value that we have down there, according to the blue letter, is about six-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars. Most of them are tax-exempt properties because we own most of them. When this is all built out over a ten-year period, the taxable value upon completion could be on a conservative level of two-hundred-and-forty-five million dollars. So that's pretty amazing. You know, we're bringing an affordable housing component to the area. We're making enormous infrastructure improvements that are, have been dire need for years down there with streets and sidewalks, storm sewers. We're making environmental improvements, including the bioswells and LED lighting. We're going to be using the Mid-American New Construction Energy Efficiency. Electric charging stations are going to be installed down there for vehicles. And all this is at very little risk to the city, other than reconstructing, reconstruction of East Fourth Street, which, as we all know, that's badly needed. You know, the public-private partnership behind the regional storm detention basin is going to benefit not only the Market District, but, but the entire area around there, and it'll give us a natural amenity for the city. So great work out of our engineering department, able to work with the development team and, and be able to come up with something like this. And to this date, all the develop, all the developing parties that are interested in building down there isn't from downtown Des Moines. We're not moving the chessboard around and bringing people from, this is from, from all parts of the country and all parts of our region. So that's, that's very, very important. So Mayor, I let my other colleagues comment on it. I'd be happy to move. We can start with fifty-five and fifty-five A, but if others wanted to chime in, I'd sure appreciate it. But thank you to everyone that's been involved in this. This has been a long process, and Mayor, you've been on here, and Bill, we've been talking about this probably since the day I was elected.
Thanks, Joe. Council, any other comments on this project?
Mayor, County, this is... Mayor, I just, I want to echo what Joe said. You know, that has been a, of course, we've used it with our Public Works Department, our fueling station, and it's really, it got to be pretty distressed down there. And to put this kind of development on paper and to see this thing come before us, the way that this thing is coming together is fantastic. I, I'd love to see that area turn into another gem for the city of Des Moines, and I think we got a great start on it. So that's just my comments. I agree with Joe.
Mayor, County, this is Carl Voss. Joe provided a terrific summary. I'd only want to add that there's a possibility of three projects will get out of the ground in twenty-twenty-one. So we're going to soon see quite a few changes in this area. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did fail to mention a new, more efficient municipal service center where, you know, everything's scattered throughout that area. We're going to have everybody in place in our main facility, and it came in underbid. So that's, that's another plus for our residents and our, and the service that we can provide to the residents of our city of Des Moines.
All right, thank you all for the comments. First, are there any parties in the interest who would like to speak on this? Any of the parties in interest? I see none. Are there any parties in the general public? Again, up to one minute apiece to speak if anybody would like to speak on this. And I see that it says seven minutes, although it should have said five, but nevertheless, let's, let's go ahead and open it up. Jalen? Recognize you.
Hey. Good Monday. Hello. Just want to recognize the fact that the East Village is gentrified and is continuing to be gentrified. So while I continue this, while y'all continue this East Village Master Plan of the Plan DSM, please recognize that you are furthering gentrification, and you also need to make a plan for reparations for how you will repair and help make amends for the lives and the destruction that the city has caused due to gentrification, not only in the East Village, but throughout the city. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Jalen had said. The East Village is definitely like a poster child for gentrification. So I think that that should be taken into consideration. I just also wanted to say that I think it's a little bit of a stretch to say that having a new municipal building for you guys to all work in and stuff will make everything better for the community when, you know, you could be using that money for a lot better things, like housing the homeless community that you wanted to recognize all the dead people of, at the beginning of this meeting, but not do anything for the ones who are still living. So thank you.
Adam Kellerman?
Hello, my name's Adam Kellerman. I use he, them, her pronouns. I'd like to uplift what Jalen and Peyton said. And also just add in that I also think it's a bit strange to talk about this as like being purely beneficial for all the residents, because I think it's, it's pretty clear to those of us that have been listening to these meetings, that this is mainly something that developers want. Not that like the developers are, I don't know what I'm saying there, but the point is, it's, it's not really for the people, it's for the developers and for the people that are specifically going to be using these buildings. I don't know what I'm saying there. But the point is, it's, it's not really for the people, it's for the developers, and for the people that are specifically going to be using these buildings. Mainly, though, I would just, I'm interested in knowing why during a pandemic, we're not like putting a hold on these plans, and instead diverting money, especially knowing the, the budget issues that are going to be here next year, why we aren't pausing these plans and instead diverting resources to helping the people that are struggling right now with the pandemic, that again, as Peyton said, were referenced at the beginning of this meeting. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any more hands up. Could we call the question and poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
I would like to, on this particular one, A, B, and C, please, I made a mistake, register my votes is abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That would be six zero, or six one, motion carries.
And
with the abstention.
Do we, do we only need to do the first reading of this, or is this a final consideration, just to clarify, please? On A?
A only took one, Jeffrey.
I think A's only one. I believe.
Yes.
No.
As long as we're here together, just to clarify.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
We're moving on to B.
Okay, thank you.
The city initiated request to rezone property located in the area west of southeast Second Street in the market district from DX two downtown district to limited DXR downtown district. Again, this item was continued from December seventh of two thousand and twenty. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the way was requested by Aaron Olson Douglas, the Development Services Department Director. And again, it requires six votes on this one. The first one, as was pointed out, did not. Let's go ahead and open it up. Any comments? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I would just echo some of my comments earlier. This is the same project. Once again, I will say, the risk for the city of Des Moines is reconstructing a street that needs reconstructed. The rest is on the developers. So I just want to reiterate that, hearing some of the public comment that I just heard. So I will move item B, A and B after that.
All right. Counsel, any comment or? All right, thank you. Any party in interest? Again, that's the applicant. For those within two hundred and fifty feet of the property be rezoned and who were given notice, anybody to speak from that perspective? All right. Let's move on to the germane comments from the general public. And again, we're going to give you one minute to speak on this item, five minutes maximum. Anybody want to speak on this one? All right, seeing none, would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes, no.
Okay. Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's six and one abstention, motion carries. Six yes.
All right. And C, this is on a city-initiated request to rezone property located in the areas east of southeast Second Street in the market district from DX two downtown district and/or P two public civic and institutional district to limited DX one downtown district continued again from December seventh of two thousand and twenty. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the way was requested again by Aaron Olson Douglas, our Development Services Department Director, and requires six votes. I'm going to ask city attorney, can we include D and E on this vote?
Yes, sir.
All right, let me read D and E also then. D is the first consideration and of ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Des Moines by amending chapter one thirty-five dash two point one eight point three relating to design alternatives for height limitations in the capital dominance area. A is the final consideration of that ordinance above, and again, it's requested by Aaron Olson Douglas, our Development Services Department Director. Again, requires six votes. And E is setting the date of hearing on the competitive process for sale and redevelopment of the market district in the metro center urban renewal project area and receipt of redevelopment proposal from the developer, and that will be January twenty-fifth of twenty-one. Let's go ahead and, and counsel, any comments on C, D, or E?
Mr. Mayor, no comments, but I'll move fifty-five C, A and B, fifty-five D, A, fifty-five E.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments? If not, let's see if there's any parties in interest that would like to make comment on this. Seeing none, let's ask the general public, would they like to make comment on C, A and B, D? Yep, sorry.
C is the only thing that's here.
Okay. So this is on C only. Comments on C, which is the hearing item. Again, the city initiated request to rezone the property. Adam, Kellerman.
Hello, I just need to make clarification around whether this is C, D, and E, or just C, because it was presented as C, D, and E, and it seems like that was just changed, but my question's not that. My question is for C, part B. There's apparently a waiver that was requested by one of the Development Services Directors. And I was just wondering what the reason for rushing C was, because I figure if, if they're rushing it, there's probably a reason why. So I'm just curious as to that. Thanks.
They're able to move forward.
Yeah, I think we can tell you, Adam, that I think the idea here is to move this project forward and get, get it moving so that something can happen in the upcoming year. We've already delayed it since the December seventh meeting. And I think that everybody, including city staff, is anxious to get working on this. They've been working on it for years. Seeing no other, would you poll the council, please?
County?
Abstain.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's six yes, motion carries.
Item fifty-five is on the authorization of a short-term lease with USS Huesman LLC for the rental of a warehouse space for equipment storage at three oh one Southeast Eighth Street for the temporary use by the Public Works Department. Again, this item was continued from December seventh of two thousand and twenty. Council Communication number twenty-five forty-eight. A is approving the form and authorizing the execution of short-term lease with USS Huesman LLC for the rental of the warehouse at three oh one Southeast Eighth Street for temporary use by the Public Works Department. Fifty-five I will open it up, counsel, any comment?
No comment, your honor. I'll move fifty-five I after public comment.
All right. And A too.
Excuse me, fifty-five I and A.
Right, good, good. Let's open it up to the general public and ask for germane comments. One minute apiece, up to five minutes maximum on this lease by the Public Works Department. Seeing none, would you go ahead and poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, item fifty-six. On the intelligent transportation system phase one, a resolution proof of the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designate the lowest responsible bidder is Iowa Signal Inc. Wayne Leslie is the president, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-six cents. Council Communication number twenty-five fifty. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Counsel, any thoughts?
I'll move fifty-six and fifty-six A.
All right, fifty-six and fifty-six A has been moved. Again, let's see if there's any germane comments on this intelligent transportation system phase one from the general public. Again, one minute per person to speak. Let's open up again germane comments, anyone? Seeing none, would you poll the council?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item fifty-seven is on the two thousand and twenty Graves Lake Shoreline Repair Resolution, approved of the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, receiving and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder is RW Excavating Solutions LLC. Dan Wilson is the managing member, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Council Communication number twenty-five forty-four. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Any comments, counsel, on this one?
No comments, but I will move item fifty-seven and fifty-seven A after rehearing from the public.
All right. Let's go ahead and open it up for the general public. Again, germane comments regarding the Graves Lake Shoreline Repair. One minute per person. Anyone? Call the question and poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item fifty-eight on Bell Avenue reconstruction from Southwest Ninth Street to Southwest Twelfth Street, resolution approved of the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids and designate the lowest responsible bidder is Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation. Timothy Mallico is the president, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Council Communication number twenty-five forty-three. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Counsel, any comments on this Bell Avenue reconstruction from Southwest Ninth to Southwest Twelfth?
I'll move, go ahead, Joe.
Just a couple of comments, Josh, before you move it. I, I'm hoping engineering's going to not allow construction, obviously, during the school year, that this would have to be done in the summer. This is, this is a pretty heavily-traveled road for Lincoln High School. And, and secondly, the speed platforms. I know talking to the Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association that before they're installed on Stanton Avenue, that you will have another additional meeting with the neighborhood association to see if that's actually what they want to do for speed control on that street. So if you can just make that part of your motion, Josh, that would be great.
Sure, and I think it would be the Graves Lake Neighborhood Association there, right?
Not for the, not for the speed platforms on Stanton.
Okay.
That's also included in, it was in the, it was in the blue letter. That's part of this reconstruction is there's, there's one on Lay Street and one on Stanton. And so I, I've just speaking with, speaking with George, this was, that was put on hold during COVID. But he wants to make sure that before they're installed on Stanton, that they come back to the neighborhood and tell them exactly where they're going to be installed and what exactly they're doing, because he's not sure if that's really what they want to put there is the speed bumps.
Sure, I'm happy to ask for another set of neighborhood consultation. So I'll move item fifty-eight and fifty-eight A.
All right. Thank you. Let's open it up for germane comments from the general public. Again, one minute per person, up to five minutes maximum. Anyone like to make comment on this work on Bell Avenue? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the question and poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, let's note that it's five forty-three, and we have completed our hearings. Again, I want to thank the general public for your thoughtful comments that were very germane to the issues at hand, and appreciate that. Let's move back to our request to speak from the public. And next being D, Amy. Kellerman.
Hello. My name's Amy, and I use she/her pronouns and live in East Village. I spoke at the last meeting, and over the past two weeks, I've been emailing and calling you all, urging you to pass the one hundred percent clean energy resolution. I don't have any assurance that you've received those messages, so I hope my message resonates today. In a time where there are so many competing issues and only so many resources, many of which are allocated to DMPD for some reason, the climate crisis is not one that can be postponed. Climate crosscuts many issues, including racial justice, public health and safety, as well as economic challenges. In one example, it costs a lot of money to recover from floods in Iowa. I'm sure you all already know this. This is an economic problem that everyone can relate to, because when households have to repair a flooded basement, that costs money. Roads needing to be closed for repair not only cost public money, but disrupts traffic, costing time. It even affects businesses, as we've seen with this pandemic. When people have less disposable income, it's even more difficult to support local businesses and stimulate our local economy. All of this matters because extreme weather events like floods are the direct result of greenhouse gases. Those gases are expended in the coal burning process that Mid-American uses to create electricity. I've heard a couple of council members insist that we need Mid-American to help write this resolution, but I don't understand why. That shows that you are prioritizing their profit over the racial justice, economic, public health, and safety benefits.
Time. Your honor, the next speaker, Dana Raymond, contacted me, and she is unavailable tonight.
Okay. Let's then
Katie.
Katie Menty. Katie?
Hey, can you hear me? Hello, Des Moines City Council, I come to you to utilize this time to pay respect to those who this land was stolen from and those who were stolen from their land, brought to this land and forced to build underneath under certain circumstances where they were oppressed, drugged and forced to build. I am asking that you please allow me to utilize this time to be silent. I will be back. I ask that you please, K, do not end my time.
Next speaker is Denver, Denver Foot.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Denver Foot. I use she/her pronouns and I live in Ingersoll Park area. When the derachio hit, I was left without power for days. If it was not for my neighbors, my community members coming together, I would have not been able to cook, to have hot water, to see in the dark or charge my phone. These are your constituents, Carl Voss, and my neighbors. I am extremely thankful for my neighbors for being there for me, but why did Mid-American leave us in the dark for days when they made over eight hundred million off Iowans in one year? Although I am glad to see council considering a hundred percent carbon-free future for our city, they need to remember their constituents come over corporations. Mid-American made over eight hundred million dollars in profits off Iowans last year. They left Iowans in the dark for days. It is time for them to pay their fair share, to invest in paying for local solar and wind power, proper battery storage and a modern grid. This will lead to good paying local jobs that we desperately need and prepare Des Moines for the next storm. We need a twenty-four-seven carbon-free energy by twenty thirty in Des Moines. Next speaker.
Adam Callanan, Adam?
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan. I use him pronouns. Yeah, so I would like to first call out that there is a budget discussion tomorrow at five-thirty PM. But I think a lot of you who are in this meeting are going to be interested in. Yeah, just wanted to call attention to that, because the budget's going to be a huge issue going into next year, especially with a lot of us calling to defund the police that have been so violent to many of us this past year. Also, just wanted to call out that at the start of this meeting, there was a proclamation for the houseless community that was just flat out not coupled with action. Right now, there's empty unused public buildings and they're just sitting there this winter as we're leaving houseless people out in the cold. And it's not just like we're not taking action to help them, because the city's also violently evicting houseless people from their camps. They've been doing this. As far as I know, they haven't stopped doing this. And so it is one thing to do that actually, you could all just stop doing that. I don't think that's going to happen, but I just wanted to, I wanted to call attention that while you're saying these things in the proclamation to, you know, memorialize houseless people who have died, you're saying that while allowing houseless people to be violently evicted from camps and their belongings destroyed. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
James Grimm?
Yes.
Your honor.
Hello?
Hello.
All right, so I want to talk about police brutality committed by Des Moines Police Department and I want to refer to an email that Scott Sanders sent out to a concern, as a citizen that voiced concern at the last city council meeting about brutality committed by Des Moines. And he said those people were inaccurate, uninformed and overdramatic, and then went on to complain about them calling out these officers by name when these officers' names are in the newspaper, seems like almost every week. Greg Wessels, Ryan Steinkamp, Brian Minahan, Brady Carney. These officers are told by judges all the time that what they do is illegal and their their own body cameras show that they lie in court, they lie on their police reports, which is perjury, it is a crime, and nothing is done about it. Scott Sanders supports this, these officers lying and brutalizing people. And why, why is that, Scott? Can you tell us? Could you please tell us why you think that these officers' behavior is okay? Scott?
Time.
Next speaker is Giovanni Bahena.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Giovanni Bahena, he she they pronouns. As of today, there are three thousand five hundred eighty-nine COVID deaths and two hundred and fourteen thousand, oh, there, there are over three thousand COVID deaths. It's frustrating to see that the city government is taking no action. Every time we've called out the lack of action, we are told that you have done and you are doing all that you can do and then you throw out extra precautions and actions that you can take, letting us know that you are not doing everything you can, that you are actively making choices not to help your constituents and thus killing thousands of people. So Mayor Frank County, your lack of action is killing thousands of people. Councilperson Carl Voss, your lack of action is killing thousands of people. Councilperson Johnny Bozen, Connie Bozen, your lack of action is killing thousands of people. Councilperson Bill Gray, your lack of action is killing thousands of people. Councilperson Linda Westergaard, your lack of action is killing thousands of people. Councilperson Josh Mandelbaum, your lack of action is killing thousands of people. Councilperson Joe Gatto, your lack of action is
Time.
Peyton Schumaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, there are so many things that I could talk about on this call since our city has a like a crazy amount of problems, you know, we have police brutality, COVID deaths, as Giovanni just pointed out, we have climate change causing derachios to come and tear through our community and lack of action on that. Pretty much the common theme through all of these things seem to just be lack of action, though, so it seems like there would be a really simple solution to that, which would be all of you resigning from your jobs and letting other people who actually want to take action, take over your jobs. So I think I'm going to make that suggestion to you guys. And I'm not just talking to the council people either. I'm talking to Kay, I'm talking to Scott Sanders. Pretty much anyone in the city government who doesn't really want to do their job or do anything useful, maybe give that job up to someone who's actually going to do something about it. So that's going to be my suggestion to council today. It would be great if you could actually make some COVID precautions that would actually help save people's lives. That would be really awesome. One big step you could take is actually making police officers wear masks when they're interacting with the
Time.
Bridget Peterson.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, my pronouns are she/her's and I live in Ward One, so I hope you're listening, Bill. I'll admit that I haven't always been as plugged into local politics as I should be, but these past few months, I've developed a deep interest in my ward and the needs of the other people who live there. There are houseless people in my ward. There are many young families whose income barely outpaces the poverty line. These people need food security. They need emotional support. They deserve to not live in fear of the next derachio. They need to be given access to resources that help them maintain their homes without being subservient to commercial development. And how embarrassing to have my councilman so eagerly go to bat every other week for commercial development. We don't need a stadium. We don't need a storefront for the Fairway or Casey's Corporations, who, by the way, have been eager investors and fascist politicians both locally and nationally. What we do need is to coalesce around all of the amazing community-led initiatives that are around right now, especially the one hundred percent carbon-free resolution. Do better. I yield the rest of my time.
Kelsey Trial.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Kelsey Tyrell. I live on the north side of Des Moines and I live with my husband and our two kids and I'm just wanting to talk tonight about the resolution to Des Moines City Council to get one hundred percent of our electricity from carbon-free sources by twenty thirty. I'm asking to, for you to pass this, both for personal economic reasons for my family, but also economic reasons for our community. We have lived in our home for about eight years now and the flooding in our area seems to be increasing every year, which is an economic challenge for our family to invest time and money into cleaning that up. And it's only gotten worse over the last few years as storms have gotten larger and more challenging. But also as a community, this is costing our city a lot of money, especially when you see buyout programs in the Four Mile Creek area that make families move their homes because they can no longer live in that area because it's unsafe. And while it's great that there's buyout programs, we could be saving a ton of money and putting that money into better, more efficient resources and not having
Time.
Deborah Howell?
Deborah, if you're on phone by phone, you hit star nine to speak or raise your hand. If you're participating by phone.
And I see a hand up.
Deb, can you hear us? Okay, there you go.
Hi, I just wanted to catch on a few things that have been the last few council meetings. First of all, please do not defund our police. Second of all, for the people's information, the officer who they were concerned about getting a senior police officer, that is only a step up in pay grade and it is an automatic because of education and time served. Second or next, yes, homicide rates are way up and unfortunately, over fifty percent of them are from the black community and many of them are black-on-black young teens. And I'm thinking that the raids that everyone was complaining about is a way of maybe stopping some of this. When the police confiscate a fifty thousand dollars worth of cash, one point five heroin, eighteen pounds of marijuana, thirty-seven firearms, three pounds of cocaine, one ounce of meth, nine past charges and three felons with firearms, I think the police are making a community the favorite place. And please do not give away with our resource officer.
Time.
Brenda McDonald? I see a hand up.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening. Um, I was going to speak about defunding the police, but these speakers before me just, I'm, I don't know. Defunding the police is not working so well for our neighbors to the north. In fact, the same city council members are now pressuring the chief to explain the response and violence. Citizens are now filing lawsuits against the city. In the past eight months, defunding the Minneapolis PD, homicides are up fifty percent. Five hundred people have been shot, the highest number in more than a decade and twice as many as two nineteen. Arson has increased fifty-five percent over two thousand nineteen. Carjacking is up eighty-seven percent. Iowa leader in residence have worked extremely hard in the past years to create a state that attracts all people to our state. We have watched our state become one of the top states to live in and that includes but not limited to safety. Iowa has lower crime rates than the national average. I sincerely hope that our city council will not give in to the pressure from a few.
Time.
Holly Holman.
Holly, if you're participating by phone, you hit star nine. Otherwise, I do not see you.
I don't either.
And she didn't hit star nine, so.
Okay, let's move on to Brad.
I know Brad's here.
Leeson Mayer.
There he is.
Hey, can you hear me?
Brad, I think you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Pronouns, I live in Joe Gatto's ward. Yeah, I was coming on here today to talk about the need for climate action and the resolution we're looking at with looking to transition to a hundred percent renewable electricity. And yeah, I mean, essentially, yeah, I'm in for, in favor for it. I want to echo what a lot of the previous speakers have talked about in regards to the, the place at the table that Mid-American Energy is getting and really not understanding why they're needed. But this goes into a larger discussion, which has been kind of ongoing here, talking about city councils tendency to co-govern with large corporations and wealthy developers rather than the citizens that you're supposed to represent. You know, I know a lot of folks haven't paid attention to municipal level and like local politics in the past, but I think we can agree that that is not the case anymore. And yeah, I mean, I'm ultimately just going to leave here with the call for
Time.
Isabel Brace?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Isabel Brace. I'm seventeen and I've lived in Des Moines my entire life. Conversation after conversation I've had with my friends and peers has been centered around our fear for the future. We feel out of control because we all recognize the real and present danger that climate change presents to us as people and as Des Moines citizens. The flooding we see every single summer, unpredictable weather patterns and the derachio this summer are all affecting us right here, right now, and change from our government is long past due. Continuing our current path of putting profits over people presents a real danger to us all and my children's children. We must continue our legacy as a city of paving the way for the future of comprehensive climate action. We can be a model for climate action to cities across the Midwest and the one hundred percent clean energy resolution is the very first step. Not just for the sake of policy's sake, because, but because your constituents should not be risking their health and the health of the earth just to live in Des Moines. Passing the one hundred percent clean energy resolution will secure the bare minimum of a livable future. With the rest of my time, I did want to say that as a student of DMPS, that SRO should absolutely be removed from schools. My classmates should not be policed, they should be educated. It's a school, not a weapon of the state. Thank you. I yield my time.
Jacob Grobe. There you go, Jacob.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So hi, my name is Jake Grobe and I'm a resident of Des Moines in the Ingersoll Park area. I want to acknowledge council members Josh Mandelbaum, Connie Bozen, Bill Gray and the mayor for supporting a resolution for Des Moines to get one hundred percent of our electricity from carbon-free sources by twenty thirty. This resolution will attract investment into community solar energy, battery storage, building efficiency and microgrids, which would mean when the next storm hits and power lines get knocked out, we won't be left in the dark. Cities in Iowa like Kelowna are already doing this. They have their power back on hours after the derachio rather than nearly a week or longer in Des Moines. This resolution will also bring good paying local jobs to build wind and solar farms, install panels on homes, businesses, government buildings and retrofit them to be energy efficient. Every wind turbine is manufactured, shipped, assembled and maintained by Iowan workers. Every wind turbine is manufactured, shipped, assembled and maintained by Iowan workers. Altogether, this resolution will make Des Moines resilient against severe weather and lower energy rates in the long run, as it is now cheaper to build solar and wind generation than to maintain existing coal plants. The actions of those in power in the next decade will not only decide the fate of millions of people in our lifetime, but for the rest of humanity as we know it.
Sherry Hawk.
Yes, my name's Sherry Hawk and I live in Ankeny, but I spend a ton of time in Des Moines and I consider its energy resource decisions to be very connected to my life. I'm a longtime Mid-American customer and when the duratio struck, leaving a huge limb covering my entire deck as I was recovering from COVID-19, I was left without electricity for four days. These are only a couple outcomes resulting in part from Mid-American relying on fossil fuels and not putting customers first. Decisions made by Mid-American and by the city of Des Moines affect the probability of more negative effects from climate change, as well as the likelihood that Mid-American customers will go days without essential services when disasters strike. So I tried to understand why any decision this body makes would not support a resolution assuring that this community get a goal, set a goal of 100% 24/7 electricity from only carbon free sources by 2030 and expecting the same of Mid-American in any future negotiations. The investment in our communities will be profound. Thank you.
Yvonne Seiberson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm speaking today in support of the 100% carbon free energy resolution. I am a Des Moines resident downtown in Josh Mandelbaum's district, 112 11th Street. I believe that this resolution is essential to building a sustainable Des Moines in which we can raise our children for decades to come and where we can also protect our natural resources, support local farmers and make sure that we are living in an environment that's actually safe for both us and the generations after us. This resolution will not only lead to better and more jobs in the clean energy sector, but it'll also lead to insurmountable energy savings for Des Moines residents, which is something that should be a priority for everyone on the city council. And I'd also like to bring up the point that Mid-American Energy is contractually bound to follow resolutions from the Des Moines City Council. And that means that regardless of what they've said, when they've came and lobbied y'all, they're not going to give up a contract with Des Moines. Des Moines is one of their most profitable customers across the Midwest and they will be bound to the energy resolution and there's really not going to be any consequences from that and it's going to positively impact everyone within the city as well. I'd also add on to my point that you should really consider putting more money toward actual, you know, things that matter like clean energy as opposed to militarizing the police, but I digress and I yield.
Time.
Alec Johnson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Scientific reports warning about global warming got my attention, but what really grabbed it was something I witnessed personally in March of 2009. I was on a train from Sacramento heading to DC. About two hours out, we started passing through a vast pine forest. What was startling was that all the trees were dead, all of them as far as the eye could see. It was such a spectacle that the train's conductor talked about it on the PA system. He correctly identified that global warming was behind it. Rising temperatures invited a pest, the Emerald Ash, bore to devour the entire forest. In 2012, when I was working out of Ames, I would often travel through farm country. That year, what I saw was mostly dead corn and dead soybeans. The extreme drought of 2012 became exceptional drought in many places in 2013. While I missed it thankfully, I understand the duratio made quite a nasty and lasting impression. Global warming is real, it's happening now and getting worse. Mayor and council members, you have an opportunity to take significant action by passing the renewable energy resolution that ensures Des Moines will have 24 by seven carbon free sources by 2030. Borrowing from Lincoln, let me point out that you cannot escape history. Your decision will let you down in honor or dishonor to the latest generation. So do the right thing. Like all good ancestors, you must defend our descendants. Thank you, my name is Alec Johnson. I live in Josh Mandelbaum's Ward Three. Hi.
Matthew Pierce. I see a hand up, that may be Matthew.
Good evening, council.
Yes.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, so I am Matthew Pierce at 921 Pleasant Street Downtown Des Moines, Mr. Mandelbaum's district. I also wanted to, I wanted to push the 100% 24/7 carbon free electricity goal for the city of Des Moines resolution that has been pushed to the January 11th meeting. I wanted to stress that Des Moines can be a leader in addressing the climate crisis only if you want it to be. Des Moines needs to set an example for the Des Moines metro and the state at large. As you know, Google, Amazon, Facebook, Microsoft and Apple and other tech giants are moving aggressively to eliminate their carbon emissions. And do we want them to stay in Iowa or expand into Iowa in our city and metro? Then we must do what they want and not what Mid-American wants. They are giant corporations with hundreds of billions to invest. I would think that our council would want to grab as much of that investment as possible. So that's one reason. Next, you know, Mid-American.
Thank you, Matthew. Time.
All right, I want to thank all of our speakers this evening for your comments. I will say that the city of Des Moines has been very aggressive in our work on the pandemic. Starting in March, we issued a state of emergency. We progressed and strengthened it as time went on to now we have a mask mandate in place. And we would urge each and every one of you listening to not only make sure that people are following it here in Des Moines, we are limiting the crowd sizes in all public spaces that we can possibly have authority over. We also are urging our neighbors in central Iowa to follow our lead and to issue similar orders. We think it's all of us working together that hopefully can make a effort, a significant effort in flattening the curve and getting our positivity on our testing down below 15. CDC would like to see it under five. We are working very diligently and have limited public access to all of our city buildings, including city hall and limiting a lot of the work with that is so important to a lot of our youth that are recreation centers or whatever, but we are limiting that with no basketball leagues or whatever till February. Let's hope we can work together and drive it down and everybody do the right thing. Wear a mask, wear a mask, wear a mask. Also, social distance and do not go into areas where there are large crowds, especially indoors. And hopefully as the vaccine is released and we can make a dent in it and hopefully get Iowa and especially our central Iowa and Des Moines area, the numbers down to a manageable level. So thank you all for your efforts and also Des Moines has been leading for a decade in a lot of the climate work and I am so excited to hear so many of our public reach out and speak on that issue, as we not only try to do it here in Iowa, but get other mayors in Iowa around this country and around the world to reach out and begin to do their work in spite of the fact that some areas haven't been supportive of some of that climate work and have actually denounced the Paris Climate Agreement. We're hopeful that the United States will move forward and all levels of government will work together to make it happen. None of us can do that alone. Saying that, let's move on to item 49, which is a.
Your honor, we need a motion to receive and file the the public comment.
Yep. Do we have a motion to receive and file public comments?
I'll move it.
A through W.
Forty-eight, A through W. I'll move it, your honor. Receive and file.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody to the negative? Hearing none, the item passes. Item 49 is creating the Des Moines Food Security Task Force. Scott, do you want to quickly talk to that and kind of where we are on this?
Yeah, actually, this mayor was brought to brought to me by a couple of different council members asking if this is a task force that could be put in front of the full council for discussion. So actually, I'm going to defer to, I believe, Councilman Voss and Bowden may have taken the lead on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor County. In the words of Councilman Gray, I'll be brief. I'd like to thank Ed Fallon and Kathy Burns for bringing this idea forward to us. I think their timing to bring this forward is excellent. It dovetails nicely with environmental and climate efforts. As as outlined, this will have seven members on the task force, each appointed by council members. There are already Facebook groups that are interested in backyard beekeeping and backyard chicken coops, just as two examples. I think as proposed, this outlines some terrific tasks for the the task force or the committee to to bring forward to us. Food security is sometimes referred to, and I think this committee or this task force is charged with providing our residents some some guidelines and some suggestions and resources for urban agriculture or sometimes called urban farming. And with that, perhaps a councilwoman Bowden would like to add some brief comments.
Yeah, I think it was really informational to see what when Ed and Kathy, what we saw at their place on how they transform their home to a master garden. And I think it's really more urban agriculture, urban farming and how we can all do more. And it really ties both not only with food security, but it also ties with the environment. So I think this will be a good group to put together and and really help show people how you can do more within an urban setting.
I'd like to move this for council adoption. Mayor County, thank you.
Yep, I appreciate that and I guess good Ed has been a great proponent of community gardens and and everybody working together for food security for all. And so I certainly appreciate that and thanks Carl and Connie for bringing it forward. As we know, we've got a group that has been working together for nearly probably a decade now on community gardens and locally grown food and whatever, but I think bringing everybody together and furthering this effort makes a lot of sense. So unless anybody has any other comments on this, I think we ought to call the question and hold the council, please.
County.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Forty-nine I is the acceptance of a donation of playground at River View from Variety, the children's charity of Iowa and naming the playground Variety Star Playground, Council Communication Number 20 dash 561.
Mr. Mayor, this is Westergaard and I would like to move this item after we hear from the public, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I contacted Sherry McMichael, who's the executive director of Variety, and I called her to tell her thank you for this wonderful playground that now sits in a in in Ward Two. And Sherry just said that that she wanted me to express to everyone how excited Variety was to be able to put this playground in the River View Park area and how excited they are for the revitalization that's happening in this entire area. So I just wanted to pass that on, but I for those who may not have seen this playground yet, the Variety Star Playground is a playground that is built for children of all abilities. So whether you're in a wheelchair, it doesn't matter what your disability is, there's there's something for you to do at the Star Playground. And it Variety Club, this playground costs in excess of $750,000. And this was done with donations from people who give money to Variety Club and to Variety. And now they're turning the playground equipment over to the city of Des Moines. And I just wanted to make a couple of shout outs. I sat in the River View meetings that were held every Friday morning for several years as the group of volunteers worked with the Parks Department to make River View everything it is today. And we have, we have a very special employee, Lee Wheelock, works for the city of the Parks Department, and he's the one who had all of these ideas. He would bring us pictures and drawings of of how the playground could actually replicate the amusement parks that was there. So when you go and you see this playground, you're seeing some of of the creations that Lee had put together and then they worked with the fabricator to put everything together. But it's it's really impressive. I I encourage people to go see this and while it's not technically open yet, we will be having a ribbon cutting hopefully by next June for the whole, the River View Park and the whole area. So with that, I just wanted to make sure that that everybody was aware of this playground. And I would like to move item 49I.
Joe, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Mayor, I would just echo Linda's praise to the Variety Club, you know, six years ago, they built one at Ewing Park and it's amazing and it's it gets so much use. So I can't thank them enough for what they've done in, in, you know, on the on the southeast side. So I'm glad they're branching out and doing it in all parts of the city. So again, I just, I can't thank them enough.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Mary. Yes, I have to echo that too. Sherry and the Variety Club have been great partners in everything that we do around the city and I invite them any chance that they have any opportunity in some of our neighborhoods. So it's very good to see them involved in all this. And Linda, I just want to make sure with this donation, are we going to get a chance to ride the Wild Mouse again?
I it's over there, there is a, there is a playground version and it says the Wild Mouse, so it is pretty awesome. Take your grandkids, Bill.
I can do that, thanks, Linda.
They will have a great time.
Well, Mayor County, this is Voss. I've been there twice with the grandkids. I was there on a Friday afternoon and. I was there on a Friday afternoon, and for a place that's not officially open, I counted more than 20 kids there. And what is one of the cool things is watch the kids running across the bridge, across, I don't know, is that called the lagoon? Well, doesn't really matter, I mean, they are just dead-eye right to the play areas. There are some terrific parts of that park, so we are blessed to have Variety involved in the Des Moines community.
And, and this is Westergaard, and I just want to be sure to thank Ben Page and his entire staff, because they were very dedicated and worked, and worked hard on this project.
Yeah, Linda, and I, I think all the comments that the whole council has made and the work that the council has done and you have done to move River View Park back into focus for the whole community, and what a great example of what can happen when so many hands and, and minds come together and create something really great that the whole community can enjoy, and I look forward to the official ribbon cutting, Linda. They will go out there and hopefully we'll do it at a time when we can be a little bit beyond this pandemic, and if not, we'll mask up tightly and have a huge social distance, but what a great opportunity for today and, and for a long time to come, and thank everybody for all their efforts, and especially our city staff in Oak County, who has been a big investor in things going on up there as well, so thank you all. And Linda, unless anybody has anything else, I think we ought to call the question.
Okay. Ready? County?
Yes.
Bowson?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. I want to wish everyone, city council, staff, and our general public a safe and hopefully happy holiday. Let's social distance, let's wear a mask, let's stay out of large gatherings, and together we can get through this. Thank you all, look forward to a great 2021 as we get beyond this pandemic. Have a great holiday. This meeting's adjourned.
You do the same. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody. Yep.